Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. We do appreciate your attendance, and for the viewers, we thank you for tuning in. For introductions, on my right is Vice Chair and Commissioner Todd Wilchun and Commissioner Bill Avery. And Commissioner Deb Shore will be joining us in about ten, fifteen minutes. Assisting us this morning, we have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office, Kelly Lindgren, and Dan Nolte of the County Clerk's Office. And will you join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and thank you so very much. And Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
A copy of the Rest of Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one hundred minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, September sixth, two thousand sixteen.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Epstein.
Motion carries two yes, one abstention. Number two, or claims approval of all claims processed through September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number three is a public hearing regarding the adoption of Lancaster County zoning and subdivision fee schedules.
Okay. Good morning, Dave. How are you doing?
Yeah, I had a little knee surgery, so.
You had knee surgery?
Yeah, but it's okay.
Okay, good.
Good morning, David Carey with the Planning Department.
Let me go ahead and swear again. Do you sound like a swearer for him that the testimony we're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you. David Carey with the Planning Department. What we have before you is an update to the county side of the regular applications that the Planning Department receives. As we've discussed in some of our staff meetings, the purpose of bringing this forward to you today is to have the updated fee schedule match what was just approved by the city council on the city side. This way that the application amounts are consistent with each other so that there's a fairness as far as what projects are coming in, both in the county as well as for the urban side of the work that we do. I would point out that there is one very minor change from the first version that you received. Under the community unit plan application fee, we have, you should have the updated version in front of you. Instead of being a max per acre fee, it will now say a max per lot fee, and that it's to be consistent with how the other fees further down on the schedule also are on be consistent with the way that it's being done that way. With that, I have to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, questions? Todd?
My question, and I know we've discussed this in the past, which is, I mean, this appears to be a large increase percentage-wise, but this, the fees, yeah, the fees haven't been updated since two thousand twelve.
Correct.
So is, going forward, is that the plan, is to every four years updated? Or, I mean, some departments do an annual increase so that it's not so noticeable, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, and that's a really good point. I think in a more ideal world, we would be updating this on an incremental basis every year if warranted. As you know, the Health Department does that on an annual basis so that you see the smaller annual increases instead of big chunk increases. The way we explained this increase, and it was a large single increase, was that based on, we have historically done about every four years for the Planning Department fees, so that's why when you add it up for four-year increments, it does add up to more than what you might expect to see as far as a percentage increase. There are two valid ways of doing it. I'm open to hear how you would like to handle that, to be honest with you, because the tradition simply has been about every four years for the Planning Department. Now, the Health Department does do it every year now. I seem to feel that every year would be more of a better way to do it, to be honest with you, so we might want to make a decision on that and move forward in that sense.
Okay. All right. Any other people to speak in regard to this? Okay, we have been briefed on that at various staff meetings and so forth, so let's move on then to the correlating item, close the public hearing, and let's move on to the correlating item five A.
This is a resolution adopting the Lancaster County zoning and subdivision fee schedule as provided in Attachment A.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve the adoption of the Lancaster County zoning and subdivision fee schedules. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number four is unfinished business. This is an agreement with Physical Lincoln, provide specialized medical care and assistance to Lancaster County General Systems clients who have pending claims with Social Security Administration and may be eligible for attractive Medicaid benefits.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Director of Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This was a contract that we had asked to put on hold a couple weeks ago so we could work with this particular business a little bit more in getting this contract solidified. This business changed names. It used to be Physical Therapy Solutions, and so now they're going back and getting that contract updated to reflect the correct name.
Just to reflect, everything else remains essentially the same, though?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for that clarification. Any questions?
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve this agreement with Physical Lincoln. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. New business five B is a resolution directing the county treasurer to issue tax sales certificates to the county on all parcels of real estate where there are delinquent taxes, and also directing the county attorney's office to begin tax foreclosure proceedings.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second, that we approve the resolution directing the county treasurer to issue tax sales certificates. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. C is a special event permit application from United States ATV search and rescue to hold the ATV, UTV dirt bike poker run on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen, from ten AM to three thirty PM.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is my understanding we had submitted the proposal, and you had a couple of questions that you want to direct to me. My name is DJ. I'm with US Search and Rescue.
Okay, so what roads is this going to be run on?
Basically, it was, let me get my map out, I apologize. Leaving Greenwood, which is in Cass County, we move up Branch Oak Road, two hundred and forty-fourth Street, north to Davie Road, which then becomes Lancaster County. We go into the city of Davie and then leave Davie on Fortieth Street to Ashland Road, then taking us into Saunders County. We are pretty much on county roads the entire time, until we get to Ashland. Oh, thank you. And you are?
I'm Corey with the County Clerk's Office.
Thank you, Corey.
You're welcome.
I'm here.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Your name is BJ, you said?
DJ.
DJ.
D is in David J., sir.
Yeah, okay. Have you checked to see if the, this request complies with state law in the use of ATVs and UTVs?
Yes, sir. Nebraska Legislature, Nebraska Revised Statute six oh dash six thousand three hundred and fifty-six, all terrain vehicles or utility type vehicles shall be operated on any controlled access highway with more than two marked, I'm sorry, cannot be operated on any controlled highway with more than two marked traffic lanes. We are not on any of those, so we're not on any four lane. The crossing of any controlled highway with more than two marked traffic lanes shall not be permitted except as provided in subsection nine. But basically, what it boils down to is, yes, if we have the, if we have the okay from each city or village and county commission, then basically, we can do this, but we have to have that okay from them. We did get the okay from the Village of Greenwood, the Village of Davie, the Village of Suresco, the City of Ashland, the Board of Commissioners for Cass County, and the Board of Supervisors for Saunders County.
What if we say no?
I'll cry. I guess we will not have the first poker run in the state of Nebraska that's ever been done on ATVs.
So this is a first?
Yes, sir, in the entire state. We have done this poker run over in Iowa three years ago, and it went very smoothly. We had about seven hundred participants, and it was pretty much just a long line of ATVs side-by-sides and dirt bikes. They go in, we call it a poker run, but it's more of a, it's not a race, it's kind of a cruise to see some of these smaller towns in Nebraska, and hopefully inject a few dollars into each one of these towns. And then it's back to the I-80 Speedway, and then there's a lot of events going on there for two days.
So you play a round of poker at each stop?
No, sir. They have a card, and they just get a stamp from like, like they go to Cheerios, or I think it's Brendo Pizza in Ashland, they just stamp it with a certain color stamp. Then when they get back to the Speedway, they pick four cards from a deck and then throw a dart at the last card. The reason we have them throw a dart is because of Nebraska gambling rules. It has to become a game of skill, or it's technically illegal gambling. And I have checked with them on that, and they said, yes, the way we're running it is correct, and we're okay.
The skill part is the dart.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wilchun?
I'm just trying to follow the rules, sir. We work with law enforcement in a five-star area, we're a volunteer search and rescue team, and it's just easier to go by the rules.
Well, we have the sheriff here, I think he's gonna speak.
But Commissioner Wilchun?
Well, and you started to provide a background of your organization. I'm not familiar with your organization or what the purpose of this event is for.
US Search and Rescue was started in about two thousand, well, it was before that, but in two thousand and four, we received our five oh one C, three Nebraska's nonprofit. We are a Nebraska corporation. We're a team of volunteers that utilize all terrain vehicles. We have a canine team that's nationally certified of six dogs. We have a boat with sonar, and we assist law enforcement in the event that someone is lost, or if there was a disaster and they needed extra hands on deck that were trained and knew what to do. And we've been as far as Moab, Utah. We don't like going that far. We try to stay within about a three-hundred mile radius of Omaha, and we are in Omaha.
And so this is a fundraiser for your organization?
Yes, sir. We're trying to raise funds to get some better equipment, to bring in some trainers for the canine team, keep their training up. These dogs, law enforcement, law enforcement dogs are usually trained for like drugs, weapons, things like that. These dogs are trained for locating people, for man tracking, man trailing, human remains detection, things like that. So we also can use some updates on our boat and a few other things.
I do have a question in regard to, this is a five-and-a-half-hour event, and you're crossing actually Saunders Castle, Lancaster Counties, and you're also dealing with various communities.
Yes, ma'am.
How are you set on the approval from the communities in the other counties?
The Village of Greenwood, the city clerk treasurer took it before, I guess they have a small board there.
Yeah.
And they did approve it. The Village of Davie, Pam Huck did approve it. Village of Suresco, Joan Lindgren did approve it. City of Ashland, I went to their meeting, city council. It was approved, and then both Cass and Saunders County, I've been to those meetings, and they approved it.
Okay. Commissioner Wilchun?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was gonna ask the county sheriff to come up and answer a few questions.
Okay.
And I do have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, is this route set in stone?
No, ma'am. We can change it a little bit if need be.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not set in stone. I'm sorry, Ken Schroeder?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know who that is.
He's with the Engineering Department.
Okay, a couple of his concerns, no parking allowed on county roads. We aren't parking. This is more like a parade of vehicles, just moving through the town and then coming back to the I-80 Speedway. There will be no parking. Suggest using traffic control coordinators at busy intersections. Yes, we will. We will have two people, we cross six in two areas and seventy-seven at one area, and we will have crossing people in orange and in green vests that are, that are for highway, the safety green, so that, so that there's no issues there. There aren't any dirt roads in Lancaster. We checked them. It's mostly gravel, and these people are cruising. They're not racing, they're not digging up the roadways, they're not doing stupid. We're just cruising along and going through the towns, having a nice fun ride. That's mostly what this is about. It is not a race. I would say the, we rode the area on ATVs a few weeks ago. The average speed was about fifteen miles an hour, so.
Fifteen?
Yes, ma'am. So we, ATVs don't, they're not built to go fast. That's not what, that's not what they're, well, I shouldn't say that, some are. But.
Not built for roads.
Excuse me?
They're also not built for road use.
Hmm, with the Nobby tires, no, not on hard surfaces, but on hard surfaces, they're okay for short distances. But with Nobby tires, you certainly don't want to go over thirty, forty miles an hour because you can lose control.
If you're, I do have another question. If you're traveling fifteen miles an hour on some of those roads that may be more heavily traveled, are you going to be creating traffic problems?
I don't believe so, no. We're going in groups. Basically, we're breaking down so you don't see five hundred ATVs all at once. We're kind of breaking it in groups, and then our team members will be leading out and then following up also.
How many people are registered for this? You said five hundred ATVs?
So far, the registration is about four hundred and twenty-five.
Four hundred and twenty-five.
Yes, ma'am, but that, they don't have to pre-register, so we could be surprised.
Okay. Okay, any further comments? Questions?
I'd like the county sheriff, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, I know, yeah. I just was wondering if anybody else had questions of you. Okay, well, thank you, and I think that the sheriff would like to visit. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good morning, Terry Wadner, County Sheriff. Deputy Drew Bolzer, who does a review of our applications for these things, checked with the county attorney's office and looked at statute that DJ referenced, and I, there has to be a resolution by the board that would allow ATVs to operate on either in unincorporated areas or on, in the county. So it would require a resolution by this board, and if I'm not mistaken, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, and I believe that the villages and cities that are allowing the ATVs have to have a resolution or an ordinance in place allowing ATV use as well, just for reference. So that's what, that was the basis for our recommendation for denial.
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, County Attorney's Office. Under that statute sixty dash six comma three, three five six, the board can adopt a resolution allowing ATVs only in an unincorporated village, not in the general unincorporated area of the county. So even a resolution here would not have the effect that was kind of represented to the board under this statute. So the special event permits that we issue are under our general authority over the county roads. This more specific statute allowing ATVs on specific roads would basically not allow this on any highway. A highway is any road that's open to the public. In order to allow this event, the board would have to close all the roads that are being used for this event. So although the board can do it, the board would have to close those roads that are being affected on the route. So when we saw the map, those roads would have to be closed to the public in order to allow the ATVs to travel.
And Commissioner Shore? I would assume we don't have the authority to close seventy-seven.
Certainly not, seventy-seven, but as far as the county roads.
Yeah.
You would have the authority to close, but I mean, this is a very extensive route in Lancaster County.
How many miles are in the, in Lancaster County?
Can they pull up the map again, please?
Yeah, the map, mm-hmm.
DJ, would you know? Would you know how many miles?
Yeah, okay.
Well, it'd be thirteen miles east and west, and one mile from Davie.
Right.
To the county line.
Yeah, it's very clear here where the, where Cass County is, as well as where Saunders County is. So the majority is right in the Lancaster County area?
Yeah. They would go to Davie and then north from Davie Road, which is four miles to the county line, as you go north on Northwest Fortieth, on North Fortieth. Is that right, DJ?
Excuse me, sir?
Is that, well, it'd be four miles from Davie to Ashland Road.
Yes, sir.
On North Fortieth, so. I would say seventeen or eighteen miles total.
Right.
Well.
Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Avery, and then Commissioner Wilchun.
Sheriff, do you have objections to this proposal for law enforcement reasons, safety reasons?
Well, we really didn't delve into that much considering the statute that, that we feel doesn't allow for it. It sounds like they're taking pretty adequate steps to ensure safety at, you know, crossing points of controlled highways and those kinds of things. That's a, that's a lot of ATVs on county roads. Davie Road's not all that heavily traveled. I couldn't give you traffic council or whatnot, but you know, it, it could be an issue, Commissioner, but I, I don't, you know, have any reference to say yes or no.
Commissioner Wilchun?
So my question goes back to the county attorney's office, which is, yeah, my understanding that ATVs are not allowed on highways or public roads.
Correct.
So, and that's state statute.
Correct.
And so we would, in order for us to approve this, we would actually have to have a resolution that would close these roads to the public for, from ten AM to three PM, but we don't have that authority. And that's, I mean, I don't think we do.
Well, you have general supervision over the roads. I think that under a special permit, prior years, the board has closed small sections of right-of-way in order to allow for, say, a festival or.
Bike.
Or biking or something. In this case, it would be a really, it would be a very large closure. I don't know if it would have to be for the whole time, it'd have to at least be while those vehicles are going through that area. It would have to be closed to the public in order not to be a highway, so as not to be violating the statute. The individual cities and villages do have the authority by resolution to allow ATVs, so no doubt those cities and villages who have allowed those have done so properly, but I'm not sure that the county has that authority.
Commissioner Wilchun still have?
Well, and I have an additional question for the applicant, if you could come up, because according to the map, you do cross US Highway seventy-seven. Have you had any conversations with the Nebraska Department of Roads about, about crossing a US highway for this event?
No, sir, and Endor was at the Cass County Commissioners' meeting, and they didn't have an objection, as long as we have crossing people there. I might also add, the only other issue that everybody had was insurance, and each city, township, county is named on the certificate of liability. We are carrying a very large insurance policy. But I believe Endor was at the Cass County meeting, sir.
And they have no objections?
No, sir. Cass County Sheriff was also present.
Well, then, what actually holds true for Lancaster County with needing a resolution to close county roads or whatever for this, and that would also have been true with Saunders and Cass?
I can't really speak to what those counties will do, but if we were to authorize this, I would say we would have to take those roads out of access to the public, and we would have to close the roads at least while these vehicles are traveling on those roads in order to comply with sixty-six-three-five-six. Otherwise, ATVs are not allowed on public highways.
Commissioner Avery?
Mr. Durbin, what does it take to close a road? Just a sign?
Probably would have to coordinate with the sheriff, maybe the engineer, in order to make sure that there's no public on the road at that time. I'm not sure what kind of resources that would take from the county. Maybe sheriff would be better able to explain that.
If it requires personnel at every intersection or whatever, that could get expensive.
I would think so.
Yep.
Well, and if Larry were here, I'm sure he'd be concerned about harvest and access to the roads for farmers trying to get equipment moved and machinery in and out of the fields. In that you have approval from two other counties, might you best give consideration to rerouting your poker run to greater utilized counties that don't have maybe quite the population that we do and might not be crossing a federal highway?
I mean, we were kind of far out there, Davie, there's not much around there.
Yeah, I realize, we're talking ten days, I get it.
We're not trying to come into Lincoln, or anywhere near Lincoln, or Omaha.
How did you select this particular route?
Because the whole event is starting at the I-80 Speedway, at the Greenwood exit off of Interstate eighty, and we were just trying to find a neat, neat route, but it was more about the towns and why the towns were built in the first place, and kind of doing a history of the towns, and then getting people to go through these towns. I mean, it was interesting because most of my team members never heard of Davie and a couple of the smaller towns, and I'm like, they're kind of cool towns when you go in.
I would agree with that.
They each have good steak.
Excuse me?
They each have a good steak.
They all have a history that probably most people will never hear about, but.
Commissioner Wilchun?
Well, and I mean, I'll go back to what Commissioner Shore mentioned, which I do not feel comfortable supporting this, because you will be closing roads, and that's, I think, very obvious, and this is, you know, on a Saturday, it's going to be very disruptive to the populations that live along this route if we close it, especially farmers who are in the middle of harvesting potentially. And so it's very disruptive, and I mean, I don't feel comfortable without having some type of public hearing to hear from the, joining property owners. I mean, this is going to be very disruptive to them, and I'm, I mean, it's unfortunate that, the timing just didn't permit us to do this, but I'm afraid I'm not going to be able to support this resolution.
Okay.
Okay, any comment, any further comments? Okay.
Can I just add one other thing? And this is certainly no way a condemnation of the organization. They do great work, and I feel real bad about having to recommend denial of this, but I just think from a timing perspective, like you mentioned, maybe some additional time we could make this work. maybe some additional time, we could make this work if we had more time to think through it and kind of work through the kinks in that statute. And I, I don't know if that's even possible, but, um, I just, I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, I just was even wondering if this is a home football game because Highway seventy-seven would be very-
No, ma'am. We made sure of that.
It's northwest. Yeah, I Googled that while I was standing out there because that would definitely have a huge impact on-
Yeah, it'd have a huge impact.
On Highway seventy-seven.
I just wanted to make sure.
And it's south of, it's south of the Lancaster or the Lincoln Municipal landfill. Cause that was my other concern on that if we were, it's north of there. I wanted to make sure that we weren't, that could be an issue too, on Saturdays.
Yeah, that's, that's five miles north of the landfill, so that shouldn't-
Okay, any other comments? I think I need a motion, one way or the other.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we deny the special event permit. And I'm sorry, like I said, I think it's a great organization and you do great work, but I just don't see how it's, it's possible at this point to support it.
Sir, second?
I'll second with the comment that in hopes that you can still change the route in a way that you might be utilizing those counties that aren't as restrictive as we are being. I don't know if that's possible in ten days.
It's been moved and seconded, that we deny this special, uh, permit application. Any discussion? And I guess I would just really echo, um, Commissioners Wilton and Shor's comments on this too. I think it's a great plan, but I think that it needs to be fleshed out a little bit more. And perhaps, yeah, so that we could actually have reacted a little bit, uh, earlier to it. So perhaps in another year?
Maybe next year.
Okay.
I thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Okay, okay, it's been moved and seconded that we deny it. Uh, please call the roll.
Shor?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Five D is a special designated license application from Deer, Deer Springs Winery LLC for an event on September thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, from one PM to nine PM at sixteen-two-fifty-five Adams Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Move approval.
Second. It's moved and seconded that we approve the special designated license application from Deer Springs Winery. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
F, or I'm sorry, E is a grant contract with the Asian Community and Cultural Center to provide funding in an amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the ACC Youth Program. Term of the grant contract is July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Lincoln Lancaster Human Services Director. This contract is through county funds through juvenile justice prevention dollars. Uh, it would provide services for academic success and leadership skills for kids in middle and high school that are served by the Asian Community Center. The Asian Community Center primarily serves that population that is Vietnamese, Korean, Yazidi, and then our Sudanese kids also attend there. And then just kind of to give you the overlay of really how important the Asian Community Center is and these services are to our kids. Lincoln was recently named in the top ten for welcoming cities across the United States. Specifically, we have the eighteenth largest resettlement population in the country for Asian immigrants coming in. Of that population, for our Yazidi population, we are the largest in the country for resettlement for Yazidis. There's a relatively small number comparison to other, um, refugees coming in. But as far as being in a concentrated place, we are the largest, up to forty percent of Yazidis across the United States resettle right here in Lincoln. And for those, you may not be aware, um, Yazidis are from Iraq and they are being targeted by ISIS. Uh, the, and many of them come to Lincoln, to America, under SIV status, special, um, immigrant visas, which means primarily that they were translators for our military across seas, so they get special visas to come here. Uh, ju, this service specifically provided at the Asian Community Center, they're providing life after high school programs. This helps refugees draw down those federal dollars for scholarships, for college, and for different opportunities for educational advancement, employment opportunities, for digital storytelling programs that they're providing for kids to help them with journalism and to tell their story about how they came to America, what they went through and so forth. And then to help the young women, the young Asian women, the Yazidi women, grow in leaders and do different types of leadership development with these young women. Uh, this contract, again, and you probably know, is pretty important, um, to us as Lincoln becomes more diverse, that we provide these opportunities for our kids and that we help these kids reach out and try to get scholarships to attend college and advance in our community, so.
Okay, move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve this grant contract with the Asian Community and Cultural Center. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
F is an agreement between the State and Nebraska Department of Roads and Lancaster County for the provision of transportation services for the Lancaster County Public Rural Transit Program. Term of the agreement is July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Funding is from the federal funding for public transportation operating assistance program and the State and Nebraska Department of Roads. The cost to Lancaster County shall be remaining. Eligible costs not paid by federal and state funds and shall not exceed sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Uh, good morning, Mitch Sump with Lancaster County Rural Transit. Um, just a brief synopsis, we came before you in April for approval to apply for these funds, and that was granted by the board. Uh, in June, we received notification, a verbal notification from NDOR that we had been approved for this. Uh, but it would be a few weeks before they were able to actually access the paperwork as they've changed over their systems and they were having IT problems. Uh, three weeks ago, we finally received, uh, approval to print these off and we have the paperwork now. So I'm just here to answer any questions that you folks might have about this.
Okay, well, it's, it's a fantastic program.
Thank you.
Okay. Need a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Okay, it's moved and seconded that we approve this agreement between, um, Save Nebraska Department of Roads and Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Abstain.
Avery?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, one abstention. G is a network provider contract with the Regional Behavioral Health Authority for the provision of certain behavioral mental health services at the Mental Health Crisis Center. The county should reimburse up to one million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and three dollars for the services. Term of the agreement is July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve this contract, um, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
I have a question.
Oh, excuse me.
Where do these funds come from? Does anybody know? Done?
Yeah, so the, yeah, so the re, region five, these are non-fee-for-services. And so these are paid for, um, by the county match. So we pay, um, each, each county in the region provides funding, um, as well as the state dollars coming from Behavioral Health, HHS. So they're state and, yeah, count, county dollars, but it flows through the region.
Ready, Mr. Clerk.
I'm sorry?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Okay.
Avery?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
H is a change order supplemental agreement to county contract C-dash sixteen dash two sixty-eight with constructor Zim for an increase of eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars for items of work not in the current contract.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve this change order to the county contract. Uh, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
I is an amendment to county contract C-dash sixteen dash one fifty-two with Bug Eaters Pest Control LLC for annual services of pest control. The amendment adds additional services for Lancaster County engineering. The revised contract total with the additional services estimated to be one thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Bug Eaters Pest Control. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shor?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
J is an amendment to county contract C-dash nine dash one thirty-seven with Legacy International doing business as Legacy Inmate Communications for inmate phone services for the county correctional facilities. The amendment revises pricing rates for the telephone services program, which is on a fee, uh, and commission basis.
Morning, Bob Walla, purchasing agent. Uh, just, this is a, uh, it was a federal mandated requirement that the fees for inmate phone services be set. And, uh, this has been actually in effect since June. Um, the, the rates have been, but, uh, we're finally just getting the amendment completed and, um, for your approval. Uh, according to the youth service center, the amount of commissions that the, that they get from, um, the company based on the calls that are made will actually increase with the change in the rates, so.
Is that true for the adult facilities as well?
No, I do not believe so. Theirs was changed back in May, but I, I don't think their commissions, um, were as high.
Move approval, okay.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
And you had a question?
I had a question. So the, the, the fee and the commission is paid for by the family or the?
The, the commission that we get is from Legacy, which is based on them monitoring and managing the phone system for the youth service center. So because of the number of calls made, then Legacy pays a commission back to us for being the awarded vendor. Does that make sense?
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this amendment. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Five K is an amendment to, to the following contracts for demolition. The amendments extend the contracts from September tenth, two thousand sixteen, through February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. Estimated cost accounting for all contracts is not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Contract C-dash twelve dash four forty-two with La Grande Excavating Inc. and county contract C-dash twelve dash four forty-three with MWE Services, Inc.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve these amendments for the, um, to the following, to the contracts. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shor?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
L is an amendment to, to the following contracts for the annual requirements of pumping, hauling, and disposal services for li, liquid waste products. The amendments renew the contracts from September third, two thousand sixteen, through September second, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county for all contracts is not to exceed two thousand dollars. This includes county contract C-dash thirteen dash four forty-eight with A-one First Rate Pumping Services, Inc. And county, county contract C-dash thirteen dash four forty-nine with Tan Air, Inc.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the amendments to the following contracts. I believe, what was it, the estimated cost to the county for all contracts is not to exceed two thousand, one hundred dollars? I think that's right. Okay, please call the roll.
Shor?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. M is reappearance of Jack Coogan, Philip Nolly, and Rachel Warman to the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Advisory Board with terms to expire September first, two thousand nineteen.
Move approval.
Second and-
It's moved and seconded that we approve the reappearance of Jack Coogan, Philip Nolly, and Rachel Warman. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Number six is consent items. Receive and place on file the fo, uh, following reports for August, two thousand sixteen. Assessor-registered deeds, clerk of the district court, records and information management. Utility permit number fourteen-seventy-six allowing Lincoln Electric System to relocate utilities on Rockabye Road from South Eighty-fourth Street to South Ninety-Eightth Street. There is no cost to the county. Right-of-way contracts between Lancaster County and the following. Milton and Carol Talcott, co-trustees, Rockabye Road, South Eighty-fourth to South Ninety-Eightth Streets. Tracks five and six as a donation. Lincoln Federal Bancorp, Bancorp, Inc., Rockabye Road, South Eighty-fourth to South Ninety-Eightth Streets. Tracks three at no cost to the county. Lincoln Electric System, Rockabye Road, South Eighty-fourth to South Ninety-Eightth Street. Track seven at no cost to the county. Lincoln Electric System, Rockabye Road, South Eighty-fourth Street to South Ninety-Eightth Street. Track ten at no cost to the county.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Number seven is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, we do so at this time.
Gary Aldridge, Lincoln, Nebraska. I left a window on my vehicle down yesterday and I sat in a puddle of water driving down here. It wasn't nice. Three observations. Kelly Lungan on that cup. Calendar says it's still summer for another week. And Friday, the thirteenth, comes on a Tuesday this month. The world is a bad place, a bad place, a terrible place to live, but I don't want to die. Lyrics, Reflections of My Life, Marmalade, nineteen sixty-nine. I revisit some public comments regarding grants. Grants excite some. Perhaps it is only by the concept. Perhaps it is only by the money. Recently and frequently, this board has one or more grant, one or more agenda items where action is necessary to accept as in take grant funds. It seems only the character Toto sees beyond the curtain and sees grant money for what it is. Some pretend grant money is free money. It is not free money. To disconnect grant money from private money turned public money is somehow disingenuous and mildly insulting. Especially from those who consistently and constantly point to the national debt as a disaster or crisis looking for a place to happen. The national debt is, after all, borrowed dollars. At times from me, at times from thee, at times from Chinese behind that tree. Ain't democracy beautiful? Am I com, comfortable with the national debt? I am not. At times, it is necessary to bo, to borrow. That is not, that is not always and in every case bad. So the next time an official, elected or otherwise, boos the national debt and says, knock the crap out of it, remember, a public debt may or may not be the cost of conducting public business. A public board, body, or commission exists to serve or advance a public good, the public welfare. Someone should acknowledge, on the record would be nice, grant dollars are public dollars picked from private pockets. Citizens have a reasonable expectation that they, i.e. citizens, do not exist solely as the ATM of convenience for grant-fueled programs. The notion we have to take the grant or someone else will is childish. When I was a child, I acted like a child. When I became an adult, if or when anyone asks what was done to mitigate taxes, mitigate, to make milder, less severe, less painful, well, I can offer my public comments to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments.
Number eight is announcements. The Lancaster County Board-
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, September 15th, 2016, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, September 20th, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live and is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on Five City TV, Cable Channel 5. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE.gov under Five City TV Video on Demand or Five City TV on YouTube.
Move adjourned.
Second?
Moved and seconded that we adjourned. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, Lancaster County Board of Commissioners is adjourned. And let's move on then to the Board of Equalization.
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all of its material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one are minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, September 6th, 2016.
Move...
Go ahead.
Move approval?
Second?
Moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Abstain.
Motion carries three yes, one abstention. Number two is a public hearing that is for motor vehicle tax exemption applications for Brian Medical Center, Christ United Methodist Church, Congregation of Benedictine Sisters, Lincoln Baptist Church, Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, St. Peter's Catholic Church, and St. Thomas Aquinas Church.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing.